Okay, we're going to resume our open session of our Middlesex County Council meeting for the February 14th. So I just want to report back from our closed session that council did give direction to staff on the next steps with regards to the county's decentralization strategy. With that, we'll move into, are there any inquiries? Counselor Mayhew?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'd like to make the inquiry to Chris Trainee. I want to thank all of those present for their concern and condolences to the families of the fatalities in today's collision on Melbourne Road and Glendon Drive. I appreciate that very much. They were expressed by many. There was an abundance of discussion among policing, engineering standards, and our risk. And I respectfully ask Chris, what direction do we go from here, Chris? What would you suggest?
Well, through the warden, the counselor Mayhew, you know, anytime we do have a fatality, a collision resulting in a fatality on the county road, we'll do an investigation. So we'll review the improvements that have been made over the past four years, this intersection. I've already asked the clerk to pull up some of the actions that have been recommended and supported by this council with regards to those improvements. And of course, we will, you know, we're fortunate to have the OPP with us today at our meeting. And I've made them very clearly aware that as soon as the results of that investigation are available, that it's critical for us to be able to move forward with recommending any safety improvements to help prevent these types of collisions happening again in the future. So I am more than happy to bring back a report. At the time, all the information is available with some recommendations on potential improvements at that intersection.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire?
Thank you, Madam Warden. My, my question is over to the Director of Engineering, also Mr. Chris Trainee. There was some comments made about speed zones in our municipality on county roads, specifically Second Street. Is there anything going on to look at the speed on Second Street? Currently a 60 zone across the north edge of Strathroy. Or how would that get moved forward should we want to take a look at that? Thank you.
Yeah, through, through the warden, Counselor McGuire, this is just a good reminder for everyone on council and anyone listening today on, on the YouTube. If there's a request to review a speed limit on any section of any county road, we generally tend to do them twice a year. We'll do them in, in the spring, late spring, and in the early fall. Typically, the internal ones, so staff recommended changes usually happen in the fall because they tend to coincide with any of our road rehabilitation projects or any new development that we see come online, which usually happens over the summer months. So if there are any requests for any sections of road to be reviewed, you know, this spring, certainly just direct those to myself directly and we'll bring a staff report. I do have a couple of other ones that have kind of come in, you know, over the Christmas season for us to review. So the reason we only do it twice a year is the clerk will tell you updating our speed bylaws fairly onerous process to do. So we don't like to do it every single meeting. So we tried to resolve to this spring and the fall, but certainly happy to look at, we heard Second Street and Carroll Street as well today. So we'll review those with, with the police department, just to identify the specific areas of concern.
Just for clarification, would you like me to send that to you in a request form or, or you're already undertaking that?
Yeah, through the warden, the counselor McGuire, because of what we heard earlier today, we'll, we'll review those couple of issues that were raised by the OPP.
Any other inquiries? Okay, any notices, a motion? Any counselor comments? Okay, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder so that we convene the committee of the whole at 2:49 PM. Counselor McMillan and Counselor Rock. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, we do not have any delegations, but we do have, I guess, an action item. And this one is coming from Dirk Vanderworth, our Director of Planning, and that is with regards to proposed plan of subdivision Timber Ridge. And that's file number 39T-ALB2002 in Lukin-Badolf. Dirk?
Thank you. And through the warden, so this is a residential plan of subdivision on full municipal services in Lukin. It's essentially 61 lots for single attached dwellings and a number of blocks that would be further subdivided in the future. And I do note in this report and also the next report, it is a bit of a trend that we're starting to see where developers are looking to establish the overall framework of the development, but not completely allotted out so that over time they can adjust based on markets, what's selling, frontages, et cetera. But in end, the total estimated development yield would be about 250 units for this proposal. It is northeast end of Lukin, if you call it that direction, and it's on County Road 47, Saintsbury line. So my report goes through it at a high level. Also attached are the local planning reports that were considered by Lukin-Badolf Council. I would note that we did take an agency ministry circulation and the proposed draft plan conditions deal with matters of the Asalba Bayfield Conservation Authority, the municipality, as well as the county engineer and entrance requirements. During the local process, there were some concerns by neighbors related to site access, parkland servicing, forms of development noise and those sort of matters. But those were either addressed or at least considered by local council. So in the end, it is my opinion that the proposed plan, subject to the conditions, is consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms with the official plans. And I am recommending approval. And then the proposed draft plan conditions are attached also to the report.
Okay, thank you, Dirk. Any questions on this report? Counselor Grant them?
Yeah, through you, Warden, to the Director. For myself learning as I go, I did note that it took three years from the time that the plan was accepted until it was voted on by Luke and council. Is that a typical amount of time for it to take for something to come to fruition to this stage?
Through the warden, it's, it's a good question and it varies wildly, widely, I should say. You know, some, and certainly the direction, I may go back up, the direction of the province now is that these things are to come forward much faster. In a case like this, I, I know there was time taken, but there was substantial changes. If you were to look at the first proposal, there was a second version that had a completely different parkland configuration and then the third version that ultimately Township Council was supportive of. So I think our practice has been that sort of working with developers, making changes through that process, but that has traditionally taken longer. I think going forward, we're going to have to really examine that. And there will be cases where we simply have to either make a, make a decision. Unfortunately, sometimes it may be a recommendation of denial and then they would have to restart that process. I actually think this sort of back and forth is a better process to achieve what the community is looking for and still something that the developer is supportive of, but it did take some, some back and forth.
Any other questions or comments? Then you do have a recommended motion in front of you and I would ask for a mover and a seconder for that. Counselor Grant them and Counselor Smybert. All in favor? And that's carried. And then staying with Dirk, we have another proposed plan of subdivision. And this is file number 39T-TC1903, an official plan amendment number 28, and that's file number 39-TC-OPA28. And this is Hawthorne Park in Thames Center. Dirk?
Through the warden, this is a 21 hectare property in Dorchester, sort of behind the Shoppers Drug Mart, if you're familiar with that area. It would be a development on full municipal services and much like the last proposal, it is a series of blocks as opposed to individual lots set up. The development would create eight blocks for single attached dwellings, four blocks for low and medium density, three blocks for medium density, and then some mixed use commercial blocks along Dorchester Road, kind of where the Shoppers Drug Mart is. And I mentioned already that sort of that, how developers are seeking approvals in that manner. And because of particularly with this proposed zoning of this property, it would be in the range of 350 to 500 units on the site, but we won't, you won't know that until those subsequent planning approvals are sought. There also is an official plan amendment associated with the plan of subdivision that does a number of things, including, you know, changes where the parks and open space designation is for the new parkland, et cetera. But cumulatively, the official plan amendment would allow for a broader mix of median density residential uses on the property, including stacked towns and small apartment buildings. So again, this report is a high level report. There were a number of reports at the local level and they're all attached. Again, much like the last one, this, this proposal did go through fairly significant public consultations or three separate public meetings. The plan again changed a lot from the initial and, and there certainly was that this did not meet the 120 day timing of the planning act. Having said that, an agency circulation was undertaken and the conditions that are proposed and are attached to the document would satisfy the Conservation Authority, the county engineer, again, it's on Dorchester Road, which is a county road. And the municipality, in this case, particularly for the municipality, there are some infrastructure servicing matters that need to be kind of carefully covered off. It's within the drinking source water protection area. And so there are some particular conditions that deal with that to satisfy the municipality. This proposal did generate a substantial amount of public comment during the local process. And my report mentions and kind of highlights that. The county also did receive written submissions that I would advise echo those comments that were raised and considered by local council. And really to deal primarily with, with density, but also other issues. A number of the concerns that were raised, however, do relate to the zoning of the site, setbacks and some of those density kind of requirements, which are of course a Thames Centre Council approval. So my report reviews the planning policies and, and I do come to the conclusion overall that the subject lands are in appropriate location for residential and commercial development on full municipal services in Dorchester. And I believe that the technical matters related to drinking source water protection, the natural heritage setbacks, municipal development requirements, et cetera, either have been addressed or can be addressed as conditions. And so I am recommending, I do come to the conclusion that it is consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms with both official plans and I'm recommending approval subject to conditions of the draft plan of subdivision and then also approval of the official plan amendment.
Okay, thank you for that, Dirk. Any questions on this one? Comments? Counselor McMillan?
I don't have a, a questions, more or less, it's, it's a comment. I want to thank Mr. Vanderwerf for his work on this. And in the interest of time, I did reach out. I had time, tasks and questions and I, and I do appreciate the response. It had to do with the phasing in and vis a vis intensification because as mentioned, that is a well had production. I'm satisfied with the response that I received and I note that there are improvements overall to the plan, which I think should help and the fact that the municipality still has some involvement in it beyond this. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments or questions for Dirk? Okay, then seeing none, you do have a recommended motion in front of you or the recommendation that Dirk laid out for us. So I would ask for a mover and a seconder for that, please. Counselor DeVet and Counselor Mayhew? All in favor? And that's carried. Hey, you got a big meeting today, Dirk. It's all you. Okay, so in front of us, we've got Lukin-Badolf Official Plan Amendment Number 11, File Number 39-LB-OPA11, and this is a housekeeping amendment. And I believe that's very similar to the next one as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. The two reports, and I'm not sure, I think maybe we lost Abby through the kind of the breaks in the meeting. Abby was ahead or Jacobs was going to attend also. These two reports are examples where we're sort of trying to be more proactive and dealing with matters on a number of distinct official plan amendments as the province makes changes as opposed to in the past where we'd probably wait for a five year review. So I'll go through the first one, maybe in a little bit more detail, and then the next one would be much the same. Really, this, this, their provinces, as you are aware, made a number of changes to the planning act and they're really focused on increasing housing supply by changing how municipal decision making processes occur. A number of, some of the changes are just in place. A number of the changes, you have to have policies in your official plan in order to use them. And, and this one, I just highlight, for instance, site plan control. You can have complete requirements now and you can sort of pause the review clock on it, but unless your official plan enables you to do that, you can't. So this amendment and also the next one would basically is a technical amendment to add that language to the official plan. I'm satisfied that they meet all of the policy tests and frankly, this amendment is really a direct implementation of the recent provincial changes.
Okay, thank you, Dirk. Questions or comments on this? Counselor Grant?
Yeah, thank you, Warren, through you to the Director. So, parking back to the previous two reports and my question regarding timing and the length of time it took for those two. The comments regarding the changes to the planning act, would those have sped up the timing of the two previous applications, if you understand what I'm asking?
Through the warden, the, the changes of this particular official plan amendment deal more with site plan. And I'm trying to think also the 10 lots or less, there's a number of changes in there. So wouldn't apply to plans of subdivision. Generally, the provincial changes, they require the refunding of applications as of January 1st, although the province has indicated they're going to postpone that six months. They haven't actually passed that yet. It applies to, I believe, zoning, site plan, certain local applications. It doesn't yet actually apply to county level applications, although it likely will be extended to that. But it would be, I'd submit, it would be very difficult to get a plan of subdivision before you in, in four months, frankly. Especially if a local council wanted to have more than one public meeting, it just would be, the timing requirements would be very difficult. So I don't think this change would particularly impact those last two applications. But this proposed, the proposed changes in this official plan amendment will enable your staff and really it's your building official to pause site plan applications and a few of those at that local level. Ensure they have complete applications and then restart the clock as needed.
Any other comments or questions? Then you've got a motion in front of you that I would ask for a mover and a seconder on. Counselor Clark? And Counselor Rock? All in favor? And that's carried. And we have a similar housekeeping amendment for Adelaide Metcalf Official Plan, and that's amendment number 15, File Number 39-AM-OPA15. Dirk?
Very briefly, very similar, not identical. When you look at them, the township took a slightly different wording on a few of the policy areas, all within sort of a reasonable framework and compliance, in my view, with the intent of the legislation. So I am recommending approval of it.
Okay, any comments on this one? And I would ask for a mover and a seconder for the recommendation as laid out for you. Counselor Mayhew and Counselor Grant them? All in favor? And that's carried. This one is an official plan amendment for Newberry, and this is official plan number 14 on York Street, File Number 39-NEW-OPA14. Dirk?
Thank you, through the warden. This is a property, it's a small church right behind the, the village office, if you're familiar with it. And of course, the existing designation requires it to be a church. The church has been closed for a number of years and the owner are seeking to redevelop the, repurpose the building as a residence, which we've seen, of course, a lot across the county. So it's sort of a technical amendment. I have reviewed it against the policies and I am satisfied that it meets the test and I'm therefore recommending approval.
Thank you, Dirk. Questions or comment on this one? Then you've got the motion or the recommendation in front of you and I would ask for a mover and a seconder for this one, please. Counselor McGuire and Counselor DeVet? All in favor? And that's carried. Should be a nice little exciting project for Newberry, actually. Okay, Chris, you're up. Chris Bailey's up with an information technology services. This is some updates to our policies.
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. I've got Greg with me today. He's gonna go over the analysis. I'm gonna do the background. So we use policies to maintain the security and the integrity of county information technology infrastructure and ensure ITS assets are used safely and appropriately. The ITS strategic plan, which we brought forward in January, had some recommendations for enhancements to IT governance. These enhancements did include reviewing and refreshing existing ITS policies as well as developing new procedures and policies. Initially, we took a look at four ITS policies. They've been reviewed and they've been updated to better align with industry standards and best practices. Those policies were ITS asset management policy, the acceptable use of technology policy, cell phone and mobile device policy, and our password policy. We're going to continue to work through the strategic plan recommendations, which does include developing and implementing new policies and procedures. And these are going to help strengthen our cybersecurity program as well as provide guidance to staff on the appropriate and safe use of technology. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg. Greg's going to go through each of the policies, what's changed in those and what's been revised, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris. Through the, the warden to council. So these four policies ahead in front of you, like Chris had mentioned, were the, the asset management, acceptable use, cell phone, mobile, mobile devices and the password policy. I've got a quick summary for each and then just a quick overview of the, the major changes that occurred in each one. So the asset management policy was formally referred to as the network equipment policy. We've actually renamed it to the ITS asset management policy, is a better describes the nature of the policy overall. So the policy itself defines the procurement, provisioning, disposal and destruction of any electronic devices referred to as IT assets, which are a property of Middlesex County. The updates include anticipated life cycles for these assets, support guidelines, and just a better reflection of the changes in current technology. And the language overall has been updated to better align with the structural changes within Middlesex County ITS. The acceptable use of technology policy, it does actually remain very similar to the existing policy. Some minor language updates to include the electronic monitoring policy that was introduced as an HR policy at a former previous council. And then new language related to moving and reassigning technology, including reporting obligations if a device is lost or stolen. The cell phone and mobile device management policy, it talks more about the difference between county provided assets and the bring your own device, BYOD assets. And additionally, there's better language describing the mobile device management policy and its impact on cell phones and mobile devices. And more updates regarding the corporate data versus personal data on these devices. We've also included the electronic monitoring policy as part of this policy as well. And then finally, the, the password policy. So this was formally referred to as user accounts and passwords. We've renamed it to just password policy as it better reflects the nature of the, the updated policy. It introduces some new language, including the use of a password management system. There's also the use of a privileged access management system. And the introduction of passphrases, which are essentially just a longer password that are easier to remember. Lot more characters, harder for a computer to break, but easier for humans to remember. So that is the, the summary of the, the four policies in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Chris and Greg for that. Comments or questions on what Greg's gone over? Counselor Smybert?
Thank you. My question relates to the asset policy. And just a question, when it comes to the replacement of either your workstations or laptops, I know it's a four to five years. Is it a matter of taking a look to see exactly what, like which workstations, laptops needs to be replaced or is it you going on four, four years or five years? I'm just thinking that's going to be difficult to, to budget. I'm just wondering what the process is there?
Yeah, absolutely. So through the warden, the Counselor Smybert. So the, the replacement life cycles are based on is the device still working correctly? So we'll make a recommendation if the device isn't, or if it's nearing the end of its anticipated life cycle, that it should be replaced. And whether or not there's warranty available for the device as well. So some manufacturers will offer a longer warranty, which is why there's a range of four to five years. For most desktops, laptops and items like that, we would recommend five on the upper limit. But you may find some that they, they don't need to be used every day or they don't perform as mission critical a task. They could be extended a little bit longer to kind of, you know, make it through another budget year as a result.
Any other questions for Greg? Okay, then you've got a recommended motion in front of you for the the approval of those revisions to those policies. A mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Smybert? And Counselor Clark? All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, Brent. Brent is presenting us with the long-term care service accountability agreement. And this is of course our annual declaration of compliance. Brent?
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. So this is an annual item that has appeared before council for several years now. The Lodge has a service accountability agreement known as an ELSA with Ontario Health. And it requires an annual council approved declaration of compliance with the agreement. Using Appendix E of the agreement, which is attached to my report. The actual service agreement document itself is, is a 40-page requirement of long-term care homes and other service, health service providers. It spells out a host of requirements for us to adhere to in order to ensure the continued flow of provincial funding. So it includes things like what financial, statistical, clinical data we must report to the province and how often, et cetera. So I, as Lodge Administrator, am certifying to the best of my knowledge and belief that the Lodge fulfilled its obligations under the service agreement for 2022. And therefore recommending that the declaration of compliance document be approved for signing by the warden on behalf of the county. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Questions for Brent on that? Okay, seeing none, then I would ask for a mover and a seconder to approve that document and authorize the warden to sign it. Counselor Rock and Counselor McGuire? All in favor? And that's carried. And continuing with Brent, we've got a capital project in front of us and those are replacement of lodge washers and dryers.
Through the warden to council, the Lodge is receiving provincial funding of $85,320 for capital equipment renewal. This funding represents an excellent opportunity to replace lodge washers and dryers. We have three of each and they're in use every day laundering clothing and all the linens, the bedding, the face cloth towels, feeding aprons, et cetera. And they have been used, in use now for about 17 years since the Lodge was rebuilt in 2006. A request for tender was issued via the bids and tenders website. Two bids were received, but one did not meet the mandatory requirements set out in the tender. Replacing the washers and dryers would require 80 not, or rather, 8,937 to come from lodge capital reserves. So noting that, I am recommending that the Administrator of Strathmere Lodge be authorized and directed to award tender SL 2023-0012 Harko Company Limited in the amount of $92,666 before taxes. And that the Lodge Administrator be authorized to execute on behalf of Strathmere Lodge all agreements and other documents necessary to implement the award. On confirmation, the agreements and other documents be in a form satisfactory to the county solicitor.
Excellent. Thank you, Brent. Questions? And Counselor Rock has one.
Thank you, through the warden to Brent. I have no problem with the, the recommendation. It's just, I was wondering, what's the availability on these machines? Is it like everything else or are they readily available?
Through the warden to Counselor Rock. We should be able to have everything delivered onsite and implemented by March 31st.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, then you've heard the recommended motion and the recommendation from Brent. A mover and a seconder for that, please. Counselor McGuire and Counselor Smybert? All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to our correspondence and information items. So the first set we're going to go through are the payables. So the general payables for January 6th, 2023 to February 2nd, 2023 totaling $456,792.78. The ITS payables for January 6th, 2023 to February 2nd, 2023 totaling $352,680.28. Library payables, January 6th, 2023 to February 2nd, 2023 totaling $70,510.77. MLPs payables, January 6th, 2023 to February 2nd, 2023 totaling $3,428,056.79. Planning payables, January 6th, 2023 to February 2nd, 2023 totaling $15,714.80. Roads payables, January 6th, 2023 to February 2nd, 2023 totaling $1,586,217.41. Roads payables, January sixth, twenty twenty three to February second, twenty twenty three totaling one million five hundred and eighty six thousand seven two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty one cents. Social service payables, January sixth, twenty twenty three to February second, twenty twenty three totaling one million one hundred and fifty four thousand seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty five cents. Strathmere Lodge payables, January sixth, twenty twenty three to February second, twenty twenty three totaling five hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars and sixty three cents. And economic development payables, January sixth, twenty twenty three to February second, twenty twenty three totaling seventeen thousand one hundred and forty five dollars and sixty nine cents. A mover in a second or to receive those items for information, please. Counselor DeVit and Counselor McMillan? All in favor? And that's carried. Onto our correspondence items. Project notice for Killworth Bridge rehabilitation. Western Ontario Wardens Caucus January update. Counselor DeVit?
Thank you, Warden, through you. I'm not quite sure to whom. I was looking at the item that relates to that's being run by the County of Wellington with regard to early years division and the campaign that's focused on increasing awareness and understanding and support for childcare on terrace. I was wondering we're part of like, does Cindy explain more about what that is and the benefits and I don't I don't know if this is appropriate this time, it's sort of out of the blue. Or should I just take it off line and ask you to give me a hand in understanding what's going on here?
Thanks, through the warden to the counselor. I haven't read through that, but that is a provincial initiative and it is something that the County of Middlesex is also working with their C M S town, the city of London. I will be coming back, probably in the next couple council meetings with more of an update in regards to all of our social services and childcare, because there has been a number of changes with their Quelk and all of our childcare funding. So if you're okay with that, I'll come back with a more comprehensive response then.
That'd be fine. I I just wasn't clear on who was running it and who was paying for it and all that kind of thing. So I'll just wait for your report. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor DeVit. Southwestern Community Transit Transit Training for Elected Officials and Senior Leadership. So there was some question, this session is still going on. If anybody's interested, there is a cost to it, but it is still continuing. A M O policy update for January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing intake three implementation street stream T P A amendment letter. Cindy, did you have any comment on that one?
Again, through the warden to counselors. In regards to that letter, we are actually going back to the province and asking for an extension. I believe the warden's already signed the letter. I'm just waiting for some information back from insurance and then we'll get that sent off to the ministry.
Thank you. Notice of study commencement for Pike Road Bridge Replacement Study. The truth about bio solid fertilizer fertilizer letter. Board of Health update for January twenty twenty three. A M O policy update for January sixteenth, twenty twenty three. And the Ontario release of provincial emergency management strategy and action plan. There are no comments on those. I would ask for a mover in a second or to receive those items for information. Counselor Grantham and Counselor Smiber? All in favor? And that's Carrie. Ask for a mover and a second or so that we rise from the committee of the whole at three nineteen. Counselor McMillan and Counselor McGuire, all in favor? And that's carried. Onto our bylaws. Mercy, did you want to go through those?
So we have bylaw number seven two one one, a bylaw to amend the committee appointments for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six. Number seven two one two, a bylaw to authorize a sublease with culinary catering services. And number seven two one three, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of county council on January seventeenth.
If there are no questions on that, I would ask for a mover in a second or that the bylaws be given their first and second reading. Counselor Smiber and Counselor Clark? All in favor? And that's carried. And a mover in a second or that the bylaws be given their third and final reading, please. Counselor Mayhew and Counselor McGuire? All in favor? And that's carried. Any announcements? Moves us to adjournment. Oh, announcement, sorry, Counselor Mayhew.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I would just like to announce that I and many other counselors would like to give our condolences to Counselor Grantham on the loss of his father. We wish him comfort and good memories and our thoughts are with him.
Thank you for that, Counselor Mayhew. Counselor McGuire?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Two items closely related. I was pleased to announce last Friday that Strathroy Care Dock has been able to open up a warming center in our community. It is for youth primarily between the age of sixteen and twenty five. It is an initiative put together by Thirty Seven Frank Street, which is a drop in center just across from the town hall in Strathroy. So this was a great initiative. The mayor and I had some involvement in it, but the reality is that it was two primary community leaders, business leaders that came forth and funded this. It will be a ten week program starting today and it'll run four nights a week. So that's great news for us. Actually, it's great news for the whole county. Because I I'm sure once this gets known in the community, that those seeking shelter during the evening will make their way to the community and be able to use this program. So excellent for the county. Also, coldest night of the year, Saturday, the twenty fifth of this month, there's a walk in Strathroy. This is an initiative throughout the province. I'm not sure if it's countrywide, it's certainly within the province. Lots of sponsorship, corporate sponsorships. We do have a team in Strathroy Care Dock Council. I believe I've mentioned it to you, your worship, through through our mayor. Great. So if you are interested in coming down, it's five o'clock on Saturday night. Counselor Clark, certainly just right next door to us would be lovely to see you down. I know you have been a huge supporter of Thirty Seven Frank Street and I I commend you for that and thank you for that. So that's going on. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements? Counselor Grantham?
Just a quick comment. Counselor Mayhew, thank you for the kind words regarding my father and just a little anecdote. Many of us here grew up in a rural community. So when I describe my father as a grumpy, cheap old farmer, they will understand what I mean, but one of his policies was he never paid the property taxes until the last day. He passed on Sunday. And on Friday, his last act, if you will, was to pay his property taxes. And for the first time ever, he paid them advance. So he paid them up in full for the year and I think that gave him some solace as he moved on. So thank you very much.
Very sweet. Okay, if there are no more announcements, then I would ask for a mover in a second or to adjourn our meeting at three twenty three. Counselor Smiber and Counselor McGuire? All in favor? And that's Carrie.